Looking for approval of minutes for September 14th and September 27th.
I'll make the official approval of minutes. September 14th and September 27th.
Second, all those in favor? Would you like us to also vote on the computer or?
I just listened to you do that. I brought your email in.
Okay, thank you.
And is that for both, both?
For both.
Can you just move one second so I can do that?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go down to reports. If you guys just want to quickly highlight anything in your reports so that we can get through the meeting. We'll start with the superintendent's report.
Hey, I'll try to keep it very brief. Really remaining focused on social emotional work, both first team and staff mental health, and encouraging folks to reach out if they have concerns for their children. We've got a strong team here at those schools who are willing and able to help. Our initial 2022-23 SAU budget will be presented tomorrow night at the joint org meeting. And budget development is also underway in each of our districts. So this will be coming up before we know it. We still are challenged with substitute shortages and there are some open positions in each district. So I encourage people to contact our offices if you are interested in working in the district in full or part-time capacity. We definitely have some ongoing needs. And again, I guess I would just say I'm enjoying being able to visit schools and see the teaching and learning occurring in classrooms. And I've met some wonderful students across multiple grade levels. I guess I've had some great writing lessons here and some math lessons with children. And I'm just grateful for the hard work of our teachers. And I think this is what remain a little bit challenging.
Student services report.
Curriculum instruction?
We're flexible. We can switch.
We can switch it right on. That's fine.
Okay. I'll just go prior. It's good.
No problem. So yeah, my report is attached. I'll just highlight the screening continues to be successful in schools. I included some of the data. There was testing today. But these numbers are from the past two sessions. So across the Seabrook district, we've had 248 tests or whatever else additionally was administered today. We'll continue to do that. We're also looking into the test for symptomatic testing, which I mentioned is free from the state. And we hope to pick those up next week.
Do we have an angel in the amount of like positives or if we have any positives from this testing? Is that a?
We've had one positive.
And that's an asymptomatic person?
Correct.
What is the symptom testing? What is that?
So for symptomatic testing, that's the BiMAX tests that nurses will be able to administer.
Oh, okay.
We'll pick those up from the state. And so if a student comes down with a symptom during school, the nurse would contact the parent. You'd have to have consent for any testing. And they can test the SWAB right then and there to determine if it's a rapid test, if the student has a symptom. So they would determine within 15 minutes if the student is COVID positive or not. So that's really important as far as, you know, whether kids are needing to quarantine for 10 days or not. It might just be a cold and the student needs a day or two out instead of, you know, going home and having to have the parent face the difficulties in finding their own test, which can take, we all have our own experience with that, days upon days and then results. So that's just another thing that would be at the nurse's discretion and with parents' consent, another opportunity for testing in our schools.
Now, do we have some sort of guidelines set up? So your child goes to a nurse, say they're sneezing and they take that test and they come back negative. What's the, what's their protocol going to be for a child that is negative but has, say, sneezing, a little cold?
So from there, it would just go back to the nurse's medical discretion. So what a nurse would usually do if, you know, if the student has a temperature but it's not COVID, they would still send the student home, right? If it's just a little runny nose or sneezing and the student feels fine otherwise, the nurse could say, well, you could stay in school. So it would just, we would be just eliminating COVID.
So the kid's not going to be sent home and said, oh, you know, you need to go home for like three days, test again before you come home?
No, correct. It wouldn't be test again. It still might be, you should go home.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that.
But you're right.
Depending on the symptoms.
It wouldn't be, you know, once the student was tested and it was negative, the nurse would then know that these symptoms are not due to COVID. So it's something else. The student might still need to go home for this or that for a day or two. But COVID is eliminated and they wouldn't have to, you know, be strictly counting the 10 days and coming back after, which is what we're trying to decrease.
Yeah. So what happens if, let's say, the rapid testing is not positive? Obviously, they go home. Are they able to then take a PCR test that sometimes can be more accurate? That they could then, you know, let's just say hypothetically it comes back, but the parents are questioning whether it's, you know, 100%. So they go for a PCR test, then what happens if that comes back?
If that's negative, the nurses typically go by the PCR. However, what we've seen in DHHS guidance is that if there's any positive test, they're supposed to quarantine. So that would be a separate situation that they would need to discuss. They probably recommend that the student go to their doctor to really determine what's going on if there's conflicting results.
Yeah, I think there's more chance of a negative, false negative than false positive. Because you have to have a high viral load, I believe.
Agreed. Exactly right. So if there's a negative, if there's a negative rapid test, the nurse may say, you know what? But you've got all the symptoms going on. I still recommend you go home and get the PCR. So that could be the case.
Gotcha.
Assistant superintendent report.
Sure. Yeah, keep it brief. We continue to push forward with curriculum instruction assessment. Just a couple of things for you guys. Early release planning, we have an early release scheduled actually for tomorrow, building-based. And then the one that is coming up on November 2nd, voting day, that will be an SAU-wide, the afternoon will be devoted to SAU-wide activities. We've got all our curriculum teams up and running. Got communication out to them. We've also reached out to SAU 90 to make sure that their middle school teachers are in those meetings as well. So we're looking forward to positive and productive meetings on that day. Second thing for me is you will see, or you have seen, the in the budgeting process, a portrait of a learner or strategic planning process for the 22-23 school year for SAU 21. That's something that we are weighing throughout the budgeting process. And of course, we'll be talking a lot about kind of as we move forward. But in preparation for that, we've actually put together a, I don't know, call it a pilot team. One or two members from each district are going actually to NHLI to kind of unpack what we want to accomplish. Not necessarily build a portrait of a learner, but look at some of the data sets and some of the community feedback we would need in order to engage in that process. So that's happening. We already met once and we're meeting again in October. And I look forward to just kind of providing updates as we move forward with that work. That's it for me.
FDS principal report.
All right, so recognitions. Just thank you to our reading specialists and interventionists. We, in past years, we would have the reading specialists kind of look at the data from the spring and start to form groups of students to have some pull-out services. This year, we had them go into all the classrooms and help usually the teachers do some reading assessments with the students. But the reading specialists did that with the teachers and, you know, were in the classes more to see how students were kind of re-engaging back with the curriculum, see what their needs were, and helping the teachers to start to analyze that data and look at the groupings for reading groups in their classroom and then see who might need that extra support outside the classroom. So it was a different model for them. And I think the teachers really loved it because it was kind of a thought partner for the work. You know, how to structure my class based on these different reading levels and how to support everybody and differentiate. So thank you to them for doing that. And thank you to the teachers, homeroom teachers, for collaborating with them. And then also just thank you overall to the staff and the substitutes for being so flexible. We've been having to, based on staffing, try to prioritize getting support where it's needed. And people have been really gracious and flexible about doing that. And substitutes have been willing to, you can put me here in the morning, here in the afternoon, and move everybody around. So it's not always easy and it's great that people are collaborating on that. In terms of academic programs and updates, as part of the September early release time, as you know, we had adopted four goals for the school. And so what we did was during our early release in September, we had people break into their teams that they normally work with and generate some ideas under each of those goals, action items or objectives that they'd like to see implemented. And then we brought that back to our leadership team, which is comprised of 14 people from all over the school. And that leadership team is kind of breaking up into subgroups on task force under each of the goals and looking at synthesizing that information from the staff and trying to figure out those next steps and action items, some long-term possibilities and some short-term things. So the October meeting, no, sorry, November meeting with the leadership team, they'll be working in those task force more, looking at the data, and then formalizing some plans around how to achieve those goals. So we've got some great input for that. And then community connections. Our town librarian has been working with the school to get back into the classrooms, which the kids love and we do too. So she'll be starting soon on that. That's it.
Assistant principal's report.
Thank you. I just always want to recognize and thank the whole staff for their hard work. They continue to work just so hard in challenging times. But I wanted to just highlight the Unified Arts staff who's working hard at providing extracurricular opportunities for the kids through athletics and the band and chorus program, a health club, and working with schools to play Fuel Up to Play 60 program and also offering art options for kids. Academically, we're working hard. Our interventionists have been working with the teams to look at data to determine where there are skill gaps and what students need interventions and where there are things that we can give them academically. And we'll continue to do that work. So I appreciate the teams for their effort working on it. We're definitely seeing a lot of behavioral and emotional struggles. So we're working as a school to address those things. We're seeing kids that didn't have what we would consider a normal routine for about a year and a half. And so they're definitely adjusting, some hard adjustments, back to school, traveling in the hallways, eating in the cafeteria. So we're working hard with our resources to develop some clear expectations and hope to get on top of all of that. I will have Jordan Cartledge give an update for fall sports at the next meeting. I did just want to mention that we have had some issues with other towns not playing us and canceling games due to the lack of masks in Seabrook. And we are certainly concerned about the basketball season. He's already heard from some towns that will not schedule games with us due to the masking concerns. So that's a bit of a disappointment for our athletes, but they've been kind of managing through it. And I also wanted to just highlight a big congratulations to Nikki Welch, who's an eighth grader. And she was recognized for her work to our school. She received the Fuel Good in Your Community Award. And that means the school will receive a $500 grant in her name, which is really awesome. We just learned about that last week. It's really exciting.
Congratulations. All right, I have a question. As far as the sports go, are the other towns, when we go to their schools and play, are they wearing masks during the games?
So I think they're.
So I guess I don't know what the issue is.
Right, so there is a difference between fall sports and winter sports for sure. Some towns did have a masking requirement at their schools. So when our kids went there, they had to wear masks and they did. Those towns will not come here and play us because we don't require masks. So that's what's happening. And with basketball being inside, Jordan has already heard from towns who are saying they will not come play here because we are not requiring masks, so.
But last year, did we require masks?
We didn't play last year.
We didn't play. So I guess I'm confused as to, I mean, isn't that to the coach to say, hey, if we want to play, we're going to, this team, we have to mask up?
I mean, I think.
Just because we don't require them to wear them in school, obviously, I think the kids, if they want to play a team.
Is this a public thing now, as far as the people coming to watch? Is that what?
That would be perhaps part of it when they're coming to our gyms. We don't require masks.
It'd be interesting to see how many of these kids are playing at the rim though. You know? So I guess, I guess I would like to dig a little deeper on that when she does come in to find out what exactly is the reasoning. Because, I mean, if you look at the numbers, we're like the third highest in the district. So there's two schools above us with higher numbers if you go by.
It's not just towns in our, in our SAU.
Right, I'm just saying it's, it just, I'd like to get a little more information on what that, is it because they're not wearing it during the school day? Is it because they're not wearing it on the field? Like, I don't know many kids that are wearing masks on the field. I mean, I follow my nephews around.
For outdoor sports, I think you're absolutely right. Yeah. I think when, when it comes to basketball being inside, a lot of towns are going to require masks on the court. Just, I think my kids played high school last year and they wore them on the court the whole season. And I think that, so that's the other town saying they are not going to send their kids here because our kids won't be wearing masks on the courts or don't have to, you know, it's optional.
Yeah.
So I think that's what he's getting so far. He has said, certainly, if we come to play you and your requirement is masks, our students would wear a mask at your gym.
Well, I mean, isn't that something we could take team by team? If the team's not comfortable, then we ask the kids if they're okay with the masking so that they can play the game. I mean, I would hate for the kids to, I mean, we don't have control over that. We don't have control over people when they choose to come here and play us or not. But I would think that as a team, they could decide what's best for them so that they can get through the season.
I mean, that would be an option that he could certainly work with.
Can you ask him to have them put each team, each, each school district regardless, to put that in writing so we can look at that?
I'll ask him to add it to his report in November.
Yeah.
Because my husband coaches basketball and he coaches at the Seabrook rec and they have travel teams. And he coaches at the rim and he coaches at the barn. And there are schools from Massachusetts all the way to Maine. And this was not an issue. And we actually just booked probably about six or seven, seven tournaments that knew that we were in Seabrook. And that has not been mentioned at all. That's why I'm kind of like.
Right, well, and I think, Kelly, that rec is a little different than school and a school athletic director and a school.
Well, not really, because they all have the same school.
Well, it's more the school athletic director's choice. Is that what you're saying?
Or the, it could be the administration. It could, I mean, it could be in their school rules. So in school, they may have to wear masks, but when they're playing on our rec team, they may not have to. So those students may not be wearing it on the rec team. It may not be a big deal.
Maybe, you know, just write that in writing, each school that's decided that, to let us know so we can look into it.
I think there's a solution here. I don't think the kids need to be missing games. I think that collectively as a team, they could decide what's best for them if they choose to say, well, then we're not going to play you or we want to play, we'll do it. Like, I think that's something that the team should decide. Because we, we as a school don't have, we don't have the authority to say, well, yeah, you are going to play us.
We can't, we can't force them to play.
And I'm not trying to get into debate whether we should require masks, but if we're having a, home basketball games are probably not going to happen unless we either don't have fans or we say everyone has to wear masks in the gym. That's what I'm saying. Towns are not going to come to our gym where our fans may not be wearing masks because they don't feel comfortable. So I think it probably is both. I think we're going, what Jordan feels like is towns are going to say, we're not going to come play in your gym if people are there are not masked because we require everyone, including visitors, to wear masks.
Do we have, do we have correspondence? Does she have correspondence from these schools that she can show us?
Yeah, he has heard from, I think, at least two schools that have already said they will not schedule games with us because of that. And he doesn't have any control over that either.
No, I get that. No, it's nothing we don't.
I just wanted you to have a heads up just because it's coming, you know, it's fall. We kind of got through, we had some games canceled, which was a bummer. I think it was mostly just one town. There may have been another one, but, so. But winter is going to be different because there's not outside, so.
I mean, I don't feel like myself personally, I'm not going to tell parents like you have to wear a mask to come to the game. But if they feel like I want to watch my kid and the team decides they want to play, then, I mean, I'd hate to see kids miss out on the game too. And I'd hate to see parents miss out on watching their kids. So it's kind of a sticky situation. So I'm hoping maybe we can have some sort of guidelines when he comes to report that. Like, we've got to, we've got to find a solution to this because these kids need, they need sports as much as they need school.
I agree.
So I don't, I don't want to see them not getting that in over masks, you know. I just don't think people realize, I mean, we have 19 cases in Seabrook right now. Last meeting, there was 37. We're the third, you know, on the list for cases. We have two schools higher than us in the district for cases if you, you know, calculate, you know, student ratio per cases. Like, how do you look at that and say that there's a problem there? But I get it, it's not, not always schools in the district, so. All right. Finance report.
Thank you. So we've included the year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports for this month. Just keep it at a, at a high level. We are tracking, we are tracking to our budget thus far. Of course, we're only a few months into the school year, but, and as you know, we went through the budget process last year. It was a fairly lean budget. So thus far, we are, you know, tracking to that budget. There's a couple of areas that we want to take, you know, close look at or monitor as we go through. And that includes special education. We had some unanticipated legal fees. That's, that's brought our legal account over budget. We had some, especially some related services costs. That's just, that's an area that we're, we'll look at. And as we proceed through the school year, if we do go over, we're not over budget as a whole yet, but if we do, we could always potentially look at utilizing the special education expendable trust. I also want to just address a question that was posed at the last board meeting in regard to retention of fund balance. So we did look into that as a potential warrant article through this budget process. And we'll go in depth when we go through the budget meetings, but I want to let you know, bless you, that we are, that there have been some legislative changes that has made a retention of fund balance warrant article more attractive. So they have, it was very, very much limited prior to this past legislative session and is also at a 4%. So we will be presenting a proposed warrant article to retain fund balance and that's up to 5%. And those funds can be used. The question was posed as to how those funds could be used. And that would be for any unusual circumstance. Very, very specific there. But that would be in relation to something like a, you know, hacking or theft of funds. So I'm sure you heard the news about Peterborough a few months ago. It'd be for weather-related expenditures. So if there was an excess of snow and our snow removal budget went way over, some type of infrastructure failure. So something goes wrong with our building. You could probably make an argument for technology. And then tuition and special education expenditures. As you know, those can be, you know, unanticipated volatile accounts. I just spoke about special education. So that'd be another use of those funds. And then finally, it would just be a contingency in the event of that we were to go into a deficit. And we never want to go into a deficit, but if that were to ever occur, this fund could be utilized for that purpose as well. We'll talk about it more during the budget process, but I know there were a few questions at the last board meeting. I just wanted to give you an update on those items. Do you have to answer any questions?
I'll answer more.
Peter's not here, but if there are any questions, I can certainly try and answer them.
Are we sanitizing with the steam sprayer that we were doing last year yet?
Yes.
We are, we are doing that every day?
It's twice a week. It lasts for 48 hours. So they're doing it Tuesday, Thursday because the Thursday gets them for the weekend. They're doing it on Tuesday, so.
Excellent. I just have a question. We used to get a special education report every month. I haven't been seeing that. I know that Jessica's new, but maybe you could show her a sample of what we used to have?
I think we had actually, when Jessica came aboard, I think we talked about just putting that in if there's something, we can put it into the principal reports, but.
Well, I personally liked to see the layout that we had previously with the numbers. If we can get that in our reports. Maybe you guys could show her a sample of what we used to get in our reports. I'll be great.
Can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, I neglected to, I wanted to mention, when I was saying thank you is I wanted to mention Dan Hoy, our tech director, who's done a great job and is, continues to be short-staffed because we've had that position open. We've been trying to hire for it. So I wanted to just let you know that we are working to hire. It's a part-time position, which has been challenging. So we're working on trying to get a hire in and may have hopefully a solution to be able to hire a position that would include some, a tech integration and they have a full-time solution for the board, hopefully, in the next meeting.
Saying thank you, thank you to our maintenance team and our school launch staff who are both going above and beyond in our staff. It's been a crazy couple of years. All right, so, let me see. Seabrook and Sebring, I don't have any instinct for that. If there's anybody else, have any discussion. Okay, update on return to school.
So a couple of things we talked about at the last meeting. It's asked about the cleaning, so I think that's already been addressed. The sanitizing had started prior to that last meeting, twice a week. In terms of number of cases, we have three current patients at Seabrook Elementary, none at the middle school. And across the district, there are no current cases in Hampton Falls, Northampton or Southampton, and two active cases at Witten Connet. Cumulative cases this school year, seven at Seabrook Elementary, 11 at Seabrook Middle. Cumulative in the other districts, six in Hampton Falls, six in Northampton, three at Southampton, and 17 at Witten Connet. So we have to just ask for that data. We also spoke at the last meeting about, concerning about absences. So Caroline's update around trying to look at the symptomatic testing. There's one area that we're trying to address with that to try to reduce time out of school for students. And then Dr. Hobbs can give you an update on remote support because we feel like four children are going to seem fat and tired this end of the school year due to quarantine. That we can be able to provide something that they don't lose out entirely, so.
Sure. So we developed a job description last week. Got it out in front of people that were interested earlier this week. Was it this week? And the model looks, it's basically, it's a remote support model. Okay, so teachers would be paid on an hourly basis in order to just do check-ins with students who are on quarantine for longer than three days, so four plus days. And, you know, the idea would be pretty simple. Just check in with families, check in with students, make sure that they know where their assignments are. If they need any help with completion of assignments, they would be there as a resource. And I just, just to be clear, it wouldn't be remote teaching. It would just be supporting the classroom instruction that the student is missing when they're on quarantine. So it's been out to staff and we are currently looking at individuals who are interested in the position on working through that process right now. And here's our, we've got our staff, get fully staffed on that.
Is there any, like, standard remote setup for kids that are out? Because I know, like, for me personally, I can just use my pistol. You know, I reach out to each teacher and every teacher provided me, which is a lot of work, I know, providing with either paper or remote options, you know, through their phone books. Um, providing with either paper or remote options, you know, through their phone books that they've already had. So I'm wondering, is there a set framework for what they should, not should provide, but what they can provide? Or is it more of a, just based on what the teachers need and want for what's happening in the classroom?
Right, right. Um, well, the expectation would be make the work available to students who are on quarantine. Uh, the recommendation would be to create either a CSOW account. I'm sure you guys are familiar with that at the elementary level, or a Google Classroom account. Um, and that's just, it's basically a, a place where assignments can live for, for students, so they can be accessed. Um, the good thing about this model would be we could actually have the individuals that were interested in the support as co-teachers to all of our Google Classrooms. Therefore, the, the support would actually be able to get into the Google Classroom, see what the assignment was about, what the teacher's asking, uh, and translate it as needed. But yeah, that, that would be an expectation of this.
Okay. And those, uh, support teachers, would they be current teachers that are working, and then this would be like an off, like an extra hours situation?
Correct. In order to, and we wouldn't be able to do, you know, double dipping, so it would be outside of school hours.
Okay.
Uh, so the only other thing I would add, um, really is just that, um, I think we currently have one classroom masked, uh, oh, sorry, two. Two at elementary school, um, as a result of the ten-day masking requirements that were placed by the board at the last meeting.
All right, so we said that we would come back every month and revisit, um, Dan's, um, discipline on that received numbers. I know in Seabrook there's nineteen active faces as a community. Um, what is the pleasure of the board?
I, I don't even know where to begin, because, um, prior to us making, well, the board making a decision or there was a vote on doing the masking of positive cases, one of the discussions that we had was that we were concerned of parents looking to take their children and put them elsewhere because we didn't have a mask plan in place. And we heard about this a lot weeks prior to the last meeting. And obviously, that had a lot to do with the motion that was made by Christina to do some type of, um, plan for positive cases. It's been brought to my attention that since this has been taking place, there have been students that have actually missed days at a time for not wearing a mask, and that has not been brought to our attention as a concern. And that, to me, is a huge concern. That there are students that are coming to school in the morning, their parents as parents are choosing for them not to wear a mask, and they're being sent home with no education. Days on end, some of them are provided a letter that none of us as a board have received a copy of. I had to find it on Facebook. And that's not a concern. Why was it a concern that we had parents who were looking to send their children elsewhere for an education, but we don't have a concern on children being sent home with no education over a mask?
So I'm only aware of one parent, um, that has made that decision for their child. Um, it's something that Erin and I spoke about at the time. We're enforcing the guidelines that the board was setting states. Prior to the mask conversation, I had heard from at least half a dozen parents with specific concerns about their children attending school. Some of those parents have pulled their children from school and then they're out of school. So, eh, I guess it's a, a matter of volume, but we've spent a bit in by the policy. So some of those parents chose to pull their kids out of school. Now you have one parent who has chosen to pull their kid out of school that I'm aware of.
So there's only one parent in the whole school that's child is not in school?
We do have another parent in, um, I don't remember my details again, but we have another parent that I know was bringing the child today and said that, um, you know, is, is mask still optional? And I explained not for that class. I said, then, I'll keep them home, and just picked up work.
But that was their choice to keep them home?
Yep.
In that sense. But just, just to be.
Two children that I'm aware of.
I had a second middle school student that came, wore a mask one day, came back the second day, and said, um, she was instructed not to wear a mask, and so she was picked up. So I think she missed maybe two more days of school.
And those parents have not contacted my office, so. I'm aware anecdotally through the principal.
And they were provided work, and actually, some of them.
So, um, I don't know where everyone else stands, but where I stand is, is that the original vote was that we chose for our parents optional. And I don't feel like it's optional anymore, and I feel that I just, I really have a big problem with students being sent home for not wearing masks, and like Erin's acknowledged that we do have huge behavior problems. And I do, I mean, this is probably irrelevant, but I don't feel it is. That maybe we should, you know, and that there's, there's bullying going on, there's fighting going on. Kids are fighting, and they're being sent home for one day, and the next day they come back, and I just feel like that the focus needs to be on maybe more education, more discipline, more structure, and forget the masks. And I mean, I don't, I'm gonna let every, everyone else on the board just explain how they feel, but to me, one child being out of school over this, to me, is too much. That, that parent obviously feels very strongly about this. And I think it's more than just being stubborn, it's because they, they clearly are struggling with this, and I don't feel that we have enough cases for this to continue. And I, this, this is off-subject, but I'm just gonna throw it out there so I don't forget. I al- also want to make it very clear, and I know for a fact, because it's been witnessed by adults. I got a call, I mean, a text message at midnight last night, and there is an administrator in this school that said in front of children without a mask to another student, and I can't name names, I know that because when, on, non-public, giving them kudos for wearing a mask because you're keeping us all safe. Meanwhile, there's other kids there without a mask. And I just, to me, that is inappropriate for any administrator to say that. And that was said to more than, this has been said more than once. And I just think that the whole mask thing has gotten way out of control. The comments, the conversations, um, the, the fear, I mean, there's kids in classes that they hear another kid cough, and they want to go home, and they don't want to come back because they hear in school that this kid's coughing, and we're all gonna get COVID, and they, the conversations need to stop. They need to stop, and before I didn't make the biggest deal out of it because I'm like, you know, kids talk. But this was an administrator that said this to another student with the student, other students around, and that, to me, is, that's not your place. And it, it's gotta stop.
If, if we look at just last meeting, we just referenced that. If we look at the conversation that was had here by a variety of people from all different thought processes, which is fine. The issue, I think, is so much more than what we're saying, because it's not just in the school there's division, it's outside of the school there's division. We're doing nothing as a community, as a school board to bring, yeah, however that looks, whether that's masks or no masks. I think, I agree with you, and I think masks are a topic that is so much here, but what I will say is, I personally feel like there needs to be something done when there's a positive case. Whatever that looks like, whatever we want to decide, that's fine, and I know that you don't agree, and that's okay too. Um, I just feel like if we're, I'm not like this crazy mask person that just feels like, oh, we're, we should all wear masks all the time, no matter what. Um, I think it's important that we're doing whatever we can to keep the kids in school. That's my big thing. Uh, the other thing about, um, I forget what you referenced as far as why I brought up the vote, but why I brought up the vote was because I feel like kids need to be in school, and a hundred and twenty-seven kids out of the elementary, middle, for whatever reason. Even if it's non-COVID, it's too many kids. I mean, we're taking kids out, and, and, and the testing is an issue. I mean, we all know that. So I feel like having the rapid tests available at least is great, because it took how many days, you know, and we've probably all had to deal with that, how many days to get our kids or ourselves tested and then get the test back? I mean, just for my kids alone, there was a five-day window of getting the test, but waiting for the results. Those five days, if we could avoid that and get them tested and it's negative, then we move on, and they get back in school, and they get back to work. But right now, we're in this, like, big cycle, regardless of masks. We're still gonna have quarantines, we're still gonna have a hundred and, what, maybe not a hundred kids out of school, but we're still gonna have kids out of school. And I think that that's a huge issue. And if we can just do one tiny thing to just try our best to avoid extra kids in the school, I mean, extra kids out of school, if it's ten days of mask wearing because somebody tested positive, when we're saying that if, if somebody in our house will test positive, then if the kids test negative, they have to be out an additional ten days on top of the quarantine. So the whole, well, no, that changed, that changed.
Yeah, it changed, changed. If they're in a separate room, it changed, it only.
Well, if they're, yes, they're quarantined away, but if they, if you can't quarantine,
Yeah.
you're, yourself or whoever away from the other people.
I think, I don't believe that masks are gonna change any of that, though.
But we're still, we're focused on cleaning.
Quarantine, you can't come back to school with a mask on, so I'm not really sure that that's the answer either.
If we're talking about a case in a classroom, and the, the kids have been together on all the things.
Quarantine the whole classroom.
But that's what I said, to avoid that.
Regardless of whether they're wearing a mask or not, we're not quarantining that whole class.
No, I know, but to avoid the quarantine.
My quarantines and their siblings quarantine. The whole class isn't quarantined, whether they have a mask on or not.
I know.
You're putting masks on a kid, kids. And as the, the kid that's positive is already removed from the classroom.
But they've already been in the school for how long with other kids? Whether the kid, whether they're spreading it or not, we don't know.
But the email's going out, and that's giving the parent the heads up that this is what's going on, and it's your, it's your prerogative if you want to put a mask on the child. I'm glad that Caroline clarified what she did to Jessica, because she said that if the test is negative, and it's confirmed that they have a sneezing or a coughing in a couple of days, and it's just a cold, and they can stay in. But what she also said, what she also did was she gave us conflicting information, because there was just a parent in the audience last week that said, my child was tested, both children. His elementary and his middle school child was tested negative. Came in the next day, was sneezing, and the nurse sent him home.
All right, I just feel like we're sitting where we were the first time we voted. The number, numbers-wise, I feel like we're sitting where we were the first time.
Yes.
So do we have a motion on this subject?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go back to optional, that we go back to masks are optional. I think that.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Can you hold on a second?
Yeah. So make a motion to go back to mask optional.
And who made it?
Kelly.
Yeah.
I second.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye.
And yes.
Your yes, aye.
Yeah.
Your yes. What, abstain?
Oppose. Is there any public comment on the agenda items? Just, uh, we don't have, oh, over here, they tricked me. So, um, go ahead and, um, state your name and, um, your affiliation to the school, please.
Fellas Colari, parent Anthony's Colari.
Could you, could you tell your last name to me?
S C O L A R D I.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'd like to hand this phone over, but I don't want, I can't, because I don't want to just expose parents, but I have eighteen parents in this phone who use the kid testing positive as an excuse to keep their kid home, because thirteen of them had their kids begging that they didn't, not to go to school with a mask on. So you're, you're, um, keeping everything in school, um, I dare, kind of backfires on the other side of the spectrum. Because the parents keeping the kids home and saying like, oh, he was exposed to somebody, keep him home. Myself included. Um, I just confess, but that's what I did. Um, and I have, again, eighteen other parents, and five of them, it was parental choice. Thirteen of them are parents who are just accommodating a child's will to, begging not to go to school with a mask on. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there. Um, I wanted to thank everybody for starting to spray the building again. I thought it was problematic that everybody came back to school um, had an optional mask, and somehow the spraying was kind of an everyday thing. Um, I thought that was, uh, pretty good on the board to make sure that that, and, and the sta- and the, uh, staff to get that back going. I think that the, uh, mask itself should be a worst-case scenario, and then as far as the divisive thing goes, nothing is divisive if everybody respects everybody's personal choices, period. So, we gotta teach our kids to be respectful of the kid with the mask on, keep their distance if needed, you know, like when I'm in a store and I see somebody with a mask on, I respect them, I stay back from them. I ask them, can I, do you mind if I reach here and grab something? I don't, I think that if society was more like that right now, that we would all be able to get through this. Um, regardless of the size of the holes in the mask, where's the size of the spore, and all the other stuff I've spoken about. I think the most important thing is everyone being respectful of each other and their choices. And, um, listening to our children, you know. I think, uh, we're all in here, and we're all screaming what we want. Um, maybe some of us have a personal agenda. I know a lot of us are speaking on behalf of our children and the kids that we love. But when it's all said and done, we gotta listen to our kids, and we need to be really respectful of everybody's personal choices. And if we can do that, I think that'll stop, uh, the spread of the most problematic virus that we have right now, which is the division that's going on. It's ridiculous. So, um, that's what I just wanted to say, and I didn't like your idea on the face until I saw what happened when applied. When it was applied, it was a bunch of parents listening to their kids and keeping their kids home during the time where, you know, a kid tested positive, here's the email. Do I know the kid? Oh, awesome, I'm gonna stay home. And the parents would help on that, because, you know, the kid doesn't want to wear the mask. And also, playing basketball with a mask on, we've watched the, uh, the doctor and convoy at the school board hearing with this carbon dioxide detector in his son's mask while the son stood there in less than seven minutes, the sum is at ten thousand IUs per million, which is double the toxic rate, um, of carbon dioxide. And you're talking about a kid who was just standing there. Children playing a sport that is, you know, very athletic, it's not golf, it's basketball, with a mask on, stifling their oxygen intake. Wow, that is, uh, troubling. But also, you know, if the kids want to play and the parents want to show up with masks on, that's how we accommodate the other schools. If everybody's on board, do it. Overall, I just think that this, the team might, we might not have a whole team to, uh, field. So, again, respecting everybody's choices, giving people choices, you know, loving each other regardless. Most important, remembering that everybody, whether you're a liberal, or a conservative, or a mask, or whatever you are, people are forgetting that ninety, ninety, ninety-five percent of people are trying to be the best human they can in the way that they best see fit. And maybe you might have completely different, you know, ideals, but overall, if we all respect the, accept the fact that most people are good and trying to be good in the way they best can, I think that that would, that would go a long way in having people, you know, kind of be a little more cohesive as a community, rather than, uh, you know, everybody's throats over nonsense. And then, when it's all said and done, it's people not respecting other people's ideas. So let's just all accept the fact that we're all trying to be the best human we can in the way that we see fit. And, uh, move on from there, and I think, uh, everything will just take care of itself the best way it can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for being long-winded.
Is there anybody else that would like to, um, introduce yourself and your affiliation?
Patrick Knott, AA, Woodyear Drive. We got a second grader and a third grader.
Again, can you spell your last name for me?
Knott, K N O T T.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we made some pretty good moves since the last meeting. The, I think that having the testing inside the school to determine if they're actually have COVID or not is gonna save a ton of kids, a ton of headaches from going home. Um, thank the board again for pushing for the school choice, for the parents. It's something that I think is important. Um, and I'm glad that, you know, everyone can sit here and listen to everyone's arguments on both sides. Uh, spraying the classrooms seems to, you know, be another good step forward as well. I mean, if we did it through the height of it, we should, you know, continue to keep, you know, these classrooms disinfected. Um, to echo what he said, you know, just, I, I'd like to see everyone, you know, come together over this stuff and realize that we are all just really trying to work together. Um, basketball and masking, we played basketball. I helped coach basketball last year. None of the kids on the, on the court ever had to wear a mask. There was a mask mandate for the town at the time at the rec, so the parents that sat and watched the game had to wear a mask.
And we did.
And, and we most certainly wore the masks, you know, throughout the games, and that's, that should be no problem. If people are gonna use our own personal free choice of masks or not masks over sports, that's not a Seabrook issue, that's a, that's a them issue. Because we're not, they walk into Walmart, they can go into restaurants, they go every other single place where there's freedom to choose mask or not mask, but you're gonna tell us that you're not gonna come to our gym based off the fact that maybe our parents won't be wearing masks, or the kids aren't wearing them in the classroom? This, this is. This, this is absurd. Like, we don't have to bend to these other towns. If that's what they decide, that's what they decide. But, you know, ultimately, we're here for, you know, the choice that we all make every single day. Uh, and then again, with the testing, I think that's gonna weed out a whole bunch of the other problems. We're gonna pick the people that are positive out, they'll be quarantined, they'll be gone. You can go and test other people if they have any sign, sort of signs and symptoms. We're not gonna have kids missing four days, six days. I mean, running around to get tests is one of the hardest things I think I've ever done. And I'm a firefighter, paramedic, and I've got connections to this kinda stuff everywhere. And that's not something very easy to get done. And then you're playing the waiting game and you find out that, well, it was anxiety stomach, it was the sniffles because, you know, it's just that time of year. Now you just wasted five, six days literally driving yourself nuts trying to get them done and back into school. So I really appreciate, I mean, everyone is putting forth their best foot forward. I mean, my kids are having a good school year, they're having a good time on the bus, the sports are going. Um, and I think, you know, again, the numbers are good, the vaccination rates are up, people are getting boosters if they want and/or need them. It's about choice. And I think that we had a nice motion here today, and I'm very happy to see where, you know, things are going. I'm happy to work with you people, I'm gonna be at all the board meetings. I mean, you guys work for us, but I also wanna work with you guys as well. So, um, that's all I gotta say for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like?
I have to say my last. I went to a school with a metal detector, well, three metal detectors, my high school. Um, it doesn't take much to...
Where's your school?
Central Falls, right up there. I can get them. Anyway, um, but, um, really, does it really take a whole lot to, like the thermometer I have in my house, the little digital one, takes two seconds for me to just point it at Anthony's head before he leaves the house. Does it really take a whole lot to have three people standing at a door if we're really that worried about it, if we're looking for solutions, to have three people standing at the entrances of the school and every kid who just comes in like, "Oh, oh, hundred point four, you go over here."
I think we're hoping that parents will do that.
I mean, I, I, I think, I think a large part of this is there's a lot of parents who are not trustworthy outside of masks. And, and, and I think there's, you know, some are overwhelmed and like also, you know, chasing your kid around in the morning.
Yeah, yeah.
While he's trying to shout, "Oh, by the way, the Nutra Green bars in the morning." Awesome, thank you, guys. I used to make a giant breakfast for my son, and I think I was making him chubby myself every morning. And that Nutra Green bar has, uh, actually, like, he loves it. He goes in, he gets his little bar, he has like a decent little breakfast, and I'm not like packing him full of cholesterol like an animal, so that's another awesome thing you guys do. Um, besides that, though, like the, the thermometer thing, like, if it really gets to a point where we really wanna be super proactive when we're kind of under siege, it really wouldn't take much for three people to just be at the door and just as the kids walk in, "Bink, bink, bink." I do it. Um, I kinda hope that most parents do it. If anyone needs a thermometer, I mean, they're fifteen bucks, I'll buy everybody one. Um, I'm not trying to be Daddy Warbucks, but I feel like that should be something that, you know, everybody should have the option to do, given the situation. But overall, just, I think it's super easy. Like, I really do think it's a super easy solution that can go in conjunction with the cleaning and in conjunction with all the other things we do that can make us incredibly effective without, you know, stifling, um, well, just doing the divisive type of thing that I think a lot of people are riled up over. So, yeah, thermometer, pop, 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 it's so easy.
Thank you.
I did a metal detector. The thermometer is nothing, it takes seconds.
All right.
So let's, can I say something? So I think as far as the sports, I think that if we go on the...
Not us, but whoever makes the phone calls.
If they get on the phone and they're trying to schedule games, I also think it's all, I'm not saying anybody's doing it the wrong way, but it's how you present yourself. If you, if you encourage them that we're willing to work with them, you know, that we're gonna obviously provide a safe environment for them to come here and play sports. I mean, I think it's all of like the approach that you give them. If they get on the phone and we're automatically objective to the fact, you're right, we don't do masks here, you know, sorry. I mean, I think it's more of just how you present the conversation. You know, I think that, like you said, he coaches basketball. I'm sorry, but not even just my son, there's a lot of kids out there that have asthma that literally would not be able to wear a mask playing basketball. I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be healthy. I mean, there's not a person in here that does not know that I had COVID. And you're right, it does, it does, you do a hard time breathing and stuff, but children just to play basketball, that is, that's what it's like for them who have asthma to play basketball. It's like an adult that just got over COVID. And it, you cannot expect a child that plays basketball to wear a mask who, who has asthma. So even if COVID wasn't in place, I mean, you have to also accommodate the kids that have health issues. So I just think that it's all how it's presented. You know, I mean, we don't need to be known as a school who is the only school that has a mask optional. It doesn't need to be made that way. I don't know why that would even, I just think that, you know, I think there isn't a parent out there that would not put them, I know I would put a mask on for my child to play basketball. I think it's all how it's presented.
All right.
I will have a question. Yep, can I? Okay, I'm just gonna, I can't speak in front of adults. I'm gonna say that. Kids, yes, adults, no. Um, I have a question.
Can you give your name?
Sorry, Taylor Labonte, I teach second grade.
Can you decide in LA?
L A B O N T E.
Thank you.
Is there a way, and this, I guess, is for both, I don't wanna call them sides, but is there a way that we can get professional, educated people that are experts on masks, uh, the science behind not, I mean, can we have some sort of presentation that's for the school or parents or teachers or everyone, or, yeah?
Sorry? I think it's, I think from just, I mean, any research, I think it all depends on the view of the person.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have people that support that it does obstruct your breathing. There's gonna be other people that are gonna support that it has nothing to do with the breathing. People that swear up and down that a mask works. And then there's people that actually read the side of the box, so the instructions state this does not protect you from COVID. So I think it's all gonna depend on the person you bring in. So someone like Jessica could call somebody and I could call somebody else, and we're both gonna get two different people depending on who we call.
Well, maybe bringing them to like the same table, though, so that we do hear both sides, so that everyone's sort of hearing the same information. So it's not my Google search versus someone else's Google search or my research skills versus someone else's research skills. It's, it's all of us hearing it from both sides and having that conversation together so that everyone's on the same page.
I think that, my opinion is, is that I feel like that every parent that actually cares about their child has already done that research, and that's why it's very important to give them the opportunity to make their own decision for their children. Because I know that I didn't just wake up one, I'm not being sarcastic. I know I didn't just wake up one day and be like, "No, Connor, Cameron, I don't like a mask," or, you know, because my kids will walk in the door with a mask on, from what I hear, which is fine. They can do, you know, that's, but my point is, is that I think it's, we've all done our own little research as a parent. You know, I mean, Pat, he's, he's an EMT and he'll tell you one thing, but then my pediatrician will tell you another thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So...
I think the spec...
My pediatrician told me don't put a mask on him, but that's just my...
The spec versus the spore size tells the whole story. The spec of an FDA-approved surgical mask is seventy-five to ninety-five full nanos is what it blocks. A COVID particle or spore is point one one nanos. It's like using a chain link fence to stop a handful of Tic Tacs. It's, it's not, you know, I think that the, um, the ramifications of wearing a mask long-term versus...
All right, one more and then we're gonna move on. Can you state your name and your affiliation to the school?
Kevin Fleming, uh, I teach at Winnipeg, but I'm really here on behalf of Seacoast Education Association. Uh, although I am flying the Red Sox colors tonight, if anybody's concerned. Uh, President Andrew Wallace could not be here, but he did make a note that, uh, from the Seacoast Education Association standpoint, for the understanding of maybe the public record at this point, that everyone should be wearing masks during this period of high transition in the Seabrook schools. But the CDC says that without men masks, uh, being required, there's a three and a half times more of an outbreak. So we would advise you to be thinking then more about what remote options might be coming if an outbreak would occur, if you follow the news. And it is interesting to hear that there's a discussion about what people are getting for information. But Andy Wallace just noted that, uh, that this has been the consistent policy of the Seacoast Education Association, and we just wanna underscore that, okay? We wish you well in your deliberations, but we think you really ought to be better prepared for what other options might be available. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna move along to school board training. So this is on here, we had a training scheduled prior to the last board meeting that had to be canceled, so I guess we had talked about scheduling the training. The Department of School Board Association, they weren't available for this meeting because they're chairing for the delegate assembly this weekend. Uh, the question is whether we want to schedule for the training and if so, if we wanna do it at a meeting or look at other meetings.
I personally appreciate training. I'm in the new business, obviously, so that affects things. But I feel like it's important to know what our role is as a board, what are the things that we need to be discussing in board meetings for public and not public, whatever. But also, what are we not, what are, what is not our role, um, as far as overstepping? And I think that there is a level of that, that there are things that we don't, we, we aren't usually involved in. And I think that when we do get involved, that sometimes that can cause more issues. So I feel like personally, I just like to know what, what are the real, the nitty gritty of what a school board is responsible for and not responsible for? And how that, how that's...
So how do you guys wanna go about scheduling, I guess, is the question? Do you want something during a meeting or do you want it, um, at a different time?
I think if we're gonna do this during a meeting, that would be best.
Is that a question?
I've been here twelve years in my last year.
I'll probably see if he cleans.
They got me last. All right, so you guys prefer during a meeting?
I do.
All right, so we're gonna, um, the school board goals and, um, the policy review on hiring. We're gonna skip over that until for R.C.C.A. because he, he had some information. Um, now policies, do you want to go over that?
Yes, we are. So we have a set of policies for second read and adoption, um, largely from section A and B of the board policy manual. These were reviewed by the, um, through a policy committee before your last meeting. Um, so this would be the adoption meeting. The recommendations of the committee are included with each policy.
Do I have a motion to adopt these policies?
I'll make that motion to adopt the policies.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Um, a new business, SaaS waiting list.
Yes. So Forrest had shared some information and shared some, um, costs around, um, admitting additional students in his SaaS. Um, there's nothing in our operating budget for that, um, per se. Um, as not just to provide an overview of, of the funding and some of the implications, but I think we're already feeling stretched with our custodial needs and, um, adding additional space to...
Yeah, so, um, so there is, there would be some additional costs that you just, you need to be aware of should we, should the board decide to go forward with this type of proposal. Um, the, uh, we're, we're already, um, struggling to, to fully clean and disinfect the, the school. Um, in part because there is the expanded, um, cleaning that's required based on the expanded SaaS program. So if we were to add the additional rooms, um, we would need to hire an additional custodian, um, for the, for the evening. Um, this would, you know, all in with benefits, we'd be looking at approximately sixty thousand dollars. Um, we would also need to hire that personnel prior to doing any type of, um, change to the SaaS program. Um, because, you know, without that custodian, we just, we couldn't get the, um, the facility. So, um, so looking at his spreadsheet, um, you know, it would, you know, a month out would be the absolute earliest that we could do it in order to hire someone. Um, if, if you did wanna accommodate those students, it's about forty thousand dollars at that point. Um, and then the, the additional sixty thousand dollars, so it'd be approximately a hundred thousand dollars to, um, to accommodate the, the additional students. Now, typically in these type of, you know, pilot programs, we, you know, we like to start off, you know, with a slow and then, you know, see how the, the program proceeds and then budget accordingly. Now, this, as you know, this was a budget expense, we were able to wrap it into ESAR um, for the initial, for this initial rollout. Um, but we do need to roll it into the operating budget. So, you know, keep in mind, so that that's, I would recommend that we look at the, um, you know, in this budget process, we look at this program as a whole, because it's not just this year. These are gonna be costs that will need to be incurred going forward. So that's, you know, it's an additional hundred thousand dollars every year going forward. So, um, I, I think it might, it might be more prudent to, to, to do this during the budgeting process and, and looking forward. I mean, we, none of us want to, you know, not allow kids up in the program. And we want, this is a great program, we're all fully supportive of it, but we're kinda working out the kinks, and there is a substantial cost implication now that we, all of our ESAR funds are allocated. The operating budget is lean, um, we would have to find somewhere to cut in order to accommodate a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so I, I just, from a financial perspective, it, it makes a whole lot of sense to, to look at it in the budget process.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this to our next meeting when Forrest is here so that we have a little more information to go on both sides. That's okay.
I do have a quick question, though, about that, because you were saying about adding a room and that would be what would require an extra custodian. So if they didn't, if Forrest came back and said, "Well, we don't have to add a room because we can put, we can distribute kids accordingly," does that change your thought process on at least the custodial piece?
Yeah, from a custodial perspective, we could look at different, if we could maintain less space, then that certainly changes the, the, you know, the calculations.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that's, I, so to Jessica's point, it would be helpful.
Forrest would be here to have that conversation.
They already have that at two rooms this year.
Since the beginning.
Yeah, I, I will note that we're, we're, it's, we're stretched incredibly thin right now.
Gotcha.
So, um, and we're, we're, we're trying to address that because, but it is, it's difficult.
Okay.
It's actually hard to find somebody right now, correct?
Right now, um, you know, hiring is next to impossible.
So in that case, what would happen? In that case, if you...
If we weren't able to find...
Yeah?
We, I, I, we cannot go, if, if we need the extra space, we need to hire someone in order for it to go forward. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a challenge.
Hmm.
Um, it's not impossible, but it's just, it is a challenge.
Okay. We can't even find a current person, right, for what we were already?
We're hiring, we, we're, we're trying to hire someone just to...
Just for the standard that doesn't include...
So right now, we have staff working overtime, we have, you know, we have, we have no room for error if someone's up sick or, you know, so it's, we're, we're, we're getting it done, but it's, it's, it's not sustainable.
Okay, okay.
All right, so we'll table that until Forrest is in next. Uh, next, we have some resignations.
Yeah, so we just have resignations from elementary principal Stephanie LaFreniere and from Seabrook social worker, Julian Richards.
I'll make a motion to accept Stephanie LaFreniere's resignation with regret. Thank you, Stephanie, for the years that you put into our school. And now we wish you best in your next endeavor. Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, aye.
Can I just speak briefly to that? Um, so Stephanie, um, has made a difficult decision for herself and we certainly wish her well. Um, as this is a pretty recent move, I've not yet had an opportunity to meet with staff in the building, which I think is an important step. Um, so my recommendation and my, my approach in the interim here... Um, so my recommendation and my, my approach in the interim here would be to appoint Brian as the acting principal between now and next meeting so that I have an opportunity to meet with the remaining administrators, meet with the staff, and then come to you next month with a, um, more definitive plan for the remainder of the school year.
Would you like a motion again?
I don't need one, it does. When did, um, James, okay. I believe it was added in on Friday.
Jessica, ready? I just want to publicly thank Stephanie, I've had the opportunity to work with her for five years and it's been a pleasure. So thank you, Stephanie, and best of luck.
Sorry, you don't mean I get a motion of that. Tough decision, but a quality of life decision. Thank you, thanks.
We have one more resignation.
Yes, we have a resignation from district social rep, Jeanne Richards.
Um, make a motion to accept that resignation with regret. One second. Albows in favor?
Aye. And so we will look to post that position as a student candidate. Except then, and again, I'll ask who your name is as well, she's been a great supporter of kids and families in Seabrook community over the years. She'll be nice.
Next meeting dates, SAU joint board meeting Wednesday, October thirteenth at six PM. SAU twenty-one joint board public hearing and meeting Monday, November eighth at six PM. Seabrook school board regular meeting Tuesday, November ninth at four thirty. Um, do we have anything from non-public? I'll make a motion to, like, the second. Albows in favor?
Aye.